Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the January seventh, two thousand nineteen, uh, meeting of the Muscatine County Board of Supervisors. I called the meeting to order. The first item of business is to review and approve the agenda.
Move to approve is presented.
Jeff has moved approved and Santos has seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up, to receive comments from the public. Are there any members of the public that wish to comment, uh, on an item that is not presently on our agenda? Okay, moving right along, we have item number four, discussion regarding use of slag on county roads with Daryl Sawas and Doug Hoyt. Gentlemen.
Well, thank you again for letting us come and, uh, present you with some more information on the slag issue that we've been coming to you since November, so. Uh, this is a very important subject and we want to make sure you guys are aware of everything that we found out. And we brought you nothing but facts so far and we got some more facts for you today, so. Even though you have not, uh, placed Dr. Ed Askew on the agenda and would not let him speak because you insisted he provide you with the report seven days in advance. Which I, I might add, has never been asked for before or required before. And I don't know why it was required today for these public meetings. So I'm going to provide you with the updated information from the Iowa Department of Health on the adverse health effects of slag on children and adults. So this is information right from the Department of Health. The slag analytical results provided by SSAB to Dr. Askew and to this board in his previous reports were sent to Mr. Stuart Schmitz at the Iowa Department of Health. As you remember, Dr. Mr. Schmitz was the author of the two thousand eight slag safety report identified by Mr. Sauer and Mr. Mather as a justification for the safe use of slag on our roads. Mr. Schmitz, who is the state toxicologist at the Iowa Department of Public Health, recalculated the adverse health effects for children and adults for the slag this county uses and found that the concentrations of metals are, I'll show them a second. Up to a hundred and twenty-four times greater than the maximum allowed limits for children. Let me repeat that. It's a hundred and twenty-four times greater than the maximum allowed limits for children. And in fact, the exposure, the exposure of the children to slag should be limited to two to three times a year. That's pretty serious, gentlemen. I'll repeat that. Exposure to children to slag should be limited to less than two to three times a year. Pretty, pretty good information from the state toxicologist. Also, from the next page, Daryl, up to one point seven five times greater than the maximum allowed limits for adult workers or residents that are along this slag, that the residents are exposed to slag. Now, that's anybody living along the road that has slag put on them. One point seven five times the maximum allowed limits for adults. So those two alone show that it is very toxic and very harmful to humans. So to clarify this to the board, this new information from an Iowa Department of Public Health toxicologist clearly states that slag is not safe. Clearly states it. So this is amended compared to the two thousand eight one. Because we've got a lot of new information. If you look at the steel that's come from these other foreign countries, we don't know what's in that anymore, so the analysis has changed since two thousand eight. So that's the reason we took SSAB's analysis and took it to the toxicologist. Dr. Askew has posted the complete report on his website for the public. And you can find this and you can write this down. W W W dot A S K E W S C I E N T I F I C dot org.
I'm sorry, could you, I'm trying to catch that. Could you repeat that?
Okay. I ran into that fairly fast.
Yeah, I'm not that fast.
W W W dot A S K E W S C I E N T I F I C dot O R G. And it'll be under a slag, uh, tab. So you'll find that all the full report there. So I think it's pretty clear that we've run into and found the information that you guys have asked for. Uh, it is harmful to children. It is harmful to adults. So we do need to get this slag stopped.
Do you know there are several here? Is this the tox profiles, TP one fifty-one? The, uh.
Hello? Are you asking me, sir?
Yes, sir. The report he just mentioned.
The report should be adverse health effects.
It's not the toxicological, toxicological profile for manganese.
That is the U.S. Department of Public Health, six hundred and some page report, sir, that was utilized by the state toxicologist. And I would like to say that the, uh, little statement underneath it, if you want to read that out loud, that is directly from that toxicological report.
Right now, I'm just trying to look.
All right, if you look for the downloads off to the right, there should be three PDF downloads.
Yes, sir.
Do you see the one at the bottom, adverse health effects?
There we go.
Right. And in that adverse health effects, you will find in the appendices the email from Mr. Santa Cola at SSAB with the analytical results that I sent to the state toxicologist and a copy of the email response and my initial email to the state toxicologist. And the conclusions reached in the report specifically about the toxicity are just cut and pasted from his report. So as of the date of that email, which was right before Christmas of this last year, we have someone, not me, not someone with an axe to grind, not someone who is crazy or anything else, has been pointed out. You have the state toxicologist who wrote the original report saying it's no longer safe. And the first thing he said to me after he looked at the analytical data, he said, you mean all slags not the same? I think that was something that really hit home with him that his original report might be misinterpreted as saying all slag works this way. Now, I would say, just for you supervisors, if you can go back to SSAB and get the analytical reports for the last five years for this slag, you might be able to answer exactly how unsafe it's been because you've got five years out there on the county roads, all over the place. And on top of it, if you remember my original report about that that I presented to you in November, I pointed out that SSAB failed to analyze total metals. Remember, look at total metals, not deep lay. Total metals for mercury, cadmium, and arsenic. They failed to do that. So the question is, why? Because the toxicologist asked me, why don't you have any numbers for cadmium? Why don't you have any for arsenic? Why don't you have any for mercury? Because those are the most toxic metals. And my answer to him was, I don't know. I didn't do the analysis. SSAB did. They supposedly took a representative sample from May of this year and they sent it off for analysis. I'm just using their words, not mine. And I'm using the toxicologist's words, not mine. So, there you go.
Hold it up for you. Daryl?
Doug, I would make a, a short comment and that it is, has always been board policy that anyone presents to the board when they're asked for the subject of it. And if you look at our agendas that are published, typically there's a big list of documents with those. So it's not uncommon for, for people to ask what they're going to be presenting to the board.
We've never had that before, that's.
Maybe not your group, but, but certainly it's common practice for the board to get that.
Which, thank you for letting me speak. Uh, beginning to what I'd like to talk about. I'd like to make a formal request under the Freedom of Information Act for a copy of the protocol or policy which states that a citizen who's going to present a report has to do it seven days in advance or it can't be put on the agenda. I'd like to know who wrote the policy? When it was written, and if the board approved that policy?
Well, I can tell you right now, I'll be happy. The chair, along with the county administrator, sets the, uh, agenda. The agenda, uh, in this case, uh, Dr. Askew made a request to present findings. Give me a second, I'll pull up the email that we.
Well, if you give me a second, I'll, I'll present it to you.
Okay.
I, I may not have the exact dates, but that will be close.
Sure, sure. So it looks like he received the email from, uh, is it Dr. Schmitz, I assume, the state toxicologist on December twenty-eighth? Which would have been, gosh, ten days ago. And, um, I'd asked him, or Dr. Askew asked to present information. Now, I just became chair on the, what was that? Second, that's right. So it fell to me to set an agenda on a short meeting, um, on, let's see here. On December twenty-eighth, uh, it looks like the same day he received the report. I asked him to forward us the report that he was talking about. He refused to do so. Wasn't sure why. And then, so when I became chair, I said, ju- just like with all of our, our county employees and outside groups, we need, uh, five days of notice, I believe is what I sent to him. And, uh, you know, if there's an emergency, we can certainly make exceptions. Didn't write back to send me the report, didn't write back to indicate that there was an emergency, so. I said, you, we're certainly not saying you can't speak, just asking him, hey, we'd like to have a chance to review stuff because especially in like a, a health situation, if there's stuff that apparently there is, causes a health concern, we want to know about it right away, you know? Um, it may be that in some situations, if something's ongoing, we need to call a special meeting. You know, so if there's a health concern, and I think you guys would agree, that we want to know that information as soon as possible. So that's, that is, you know, one of the reasons for the policy and the reasons that affected. I didn't get anything, so, you know, I didn't know what to make, uh, of his request. But he certainly, obviously, he's found a way to present his report, which i- is fine. Um, you know, uh, I'd ask that in the future, you do it kind of, or anybody, not just Dr. Askew. Um, but anybody do it just so that we have the ability to make intelligent decisions, you know, the more information we have. The more information we can give to the public, the better.
Oh, definitely.
So that's, that's just my request there.
Okay. But I still would like to have, and that is still a formal request for that stuff and uh, i- if I need to repeat it, I'd be happy to repeat what I'm requesting. And if possible, I'd like to have it by the end of day, Friday, five P.M., if that's a reasonable request.
Sure.
And I'd be happy to pay for the copying charges, whatever. Okay, and the reason I'm requesting that, you've alluded to some of it. Dr. Askew, you know, uh, requested more than two weeks ago to be on the agenda. About, approximately a week later, you alluded to that you said you wanted to see a copy of the.
Just, just a correction there, Daryl. Dr. Askew emailed on December twenty-eighth at one ten P.M. saying he'd like to be on the agenda. I emailed him an hour and six minutes later saying, please send us the report you want to discuss. He emailed me an hour and two minutes later saying he wouldn't.
Okay, so that's fine.
That was ten days ago, just to be clear.
Um, then, uh, as we go on down further, uh, on Wednesday of last week is when you, uh, made the response to him that he couldn't be on the agenda, correct?
Uh, I thought that that was.
But the second, the second would it be?
Uh, I, I thought it was on Friday that I stated that I emailed him. Uh, I, you know, excuse me, January third, two forty P.M. I emailed him that they need to be submitted advanced, typically five days of leno's time preferred, but exceptions may be allowed to allow shorter notice in emergency situations.
Okay. Uh, then the day after that, or it was last Thursday, I called in to be asked to put on the agenda to the, uh, administrative office and the guy, and I said, I want to talk about slag and I was, said that was okay and she took my telephone number. Doug called in about nine thirty, an hour after I didn't ask to be put on the agenda, and they didn't even ask him what he wanted to talk about. Uh, so I find a little discrepancy there. And.
If I have to clear that up, you asked for discussion about slag. Discussion doesn't require the present, the, the presentation of any new information. Obviously, in this case, it did, um, but it's, it's not a necessity. If someone wants to put a discussion item on the agenda, that's different than, you know, when they have a report already in hand and they're refusing to submit it.
Okay. Uh, then on Friday, the assistant that we talked to on the phone, uh, seemed to get fired. And I thought that's kind of coincidence, but that's fine. I, I'm not going to go into that. It just kind of raises a flag. And then, uh, last night at seven thirty, I get a call from you, the chairman, wanting to know what I'm going to talk about at the meeting. And I'd already said slag. Kind of caught me off guard and he wanted to know if we had any new information and I kind of alluded, yes, we might have some, and he wanted to know if there's some health risks. And I said, I didn't, you know, I, I really didn't feel comfortable. And he asked me why I didn't feel comfortable. And I said, I thought it was inappropriate for the chairman of the board to call me at night, the night before a public meeting, to try and find out what I'm going to talk about. It just didn't seem quite right. And his response to me was, well, I put you on the agenda, I can take you off. And now, you can take that as a threat, you can take it as intimidation, and he, he was quarrelled about it. I, I mean, we, we had a discussion. And then he continued to ask me, well, why won't I talk to him? And finally, I just said, I felt like he was being more of a lawyer than a supervisor. And I thought there was more of a discovery intent than anything else. And because of what's transpired lately, I think there's been discrimination against Dr. Askew. I think there's been attempt, this kind of censorship by not letting him present that report. It did get presented. I think, uh, I think there's been some intimidation going on possibly. So I intend to file a formal complaint with the Sunshine Group, which is a independent body that investigates open meetings laws of, and, because I think the spirit of the law has been violated here. And with that, there's one thing, we have two new supervisors that have only been here a week. And to be fairness to them, they haven't been all part of that. So I would like to move that the chair reconsidered, well, actually, it's, I move to appeal the decision of the chair to not let Dr. Askew, uh, be on the agenda this week. And the reason I'm doing that, it's not, it doesn't need a second, it's not debatable, it's not amendable. And you just take a roll call vote of your supervisors who support you. If, uh, the, the two new ones choose not to support you on this issue, it may protect them from a fine, uh, from the open meetings law, if there is one. I'm not saying there's going to be one, but that's just what I'd ask.
The only problem is, we can only act on items that are on the agenda. That is more purposes of the.
You're wrong, you're, appeal the decision of the chair is not an action.
If it's, if it's a decision that's made in parliamentary procedure.
Yes, that is correct.
Not a parliamentary decision.
Yes, you operate under Robert's Rules of Order.
Not in the dis, not in the setting of the agenda, we do not.
No, but I'm, I'm appealing your decision that you did that, and that is, uh, possible under Robert's Rules of Order.
Sir.
All they're doing is questioning your, uh, authority and approving it by the other members.
Do you understand, we are forbidden by Iowa law from taking any action.
You aren't taking any action, you're just taking.
On the agenda.
You're not taking any action, you're just seeing what the support is of the other supervisors.
So let me, let me understand. You, your concern is you want Dr. Askew to be able to tell us about this email?
No, it's too late, that's over. But I, I'm saying your way, attempt to block him was incorrect and, uh, not in the spirit of the open meetings law. And I'd like to protect the two new, uh, supervisors because they haven't been a part of all this. And it's not fair to them. So by taking a vote and they don't say, vote nay against what you did, it would kind of protect them, but if you wish not to do that, that's fine.
I don't, I don't feel that it's in order.
And I feel you're out of order on that, under Robert's Rules of Order.
Well, I disagree.
So that's why you take a vote of your other members, to see if you're in order.
Sir, I disagree. I don't think you're quite familiar with Robert's Rules of Order.
I'm very familiar with it.
I disagree. But if Dr. Askew wants to speak on this email that's already presented, I'm happy to allow him to do it.
But it's the way in which you did it is incorrect and violates open meetings law.
All right, Daryl, we've been here to talk about public health, right?
Yes.
And your concern is that this stuff is toxic.
Yes.
Dr. Askew has had a report for ten days that this stuff is toxic, yes?
Yes.
He hasn't shared it with the board, yes?
No, I, I guess he has, I don't know.
Despite requests that he tells us about any toxic information he finds, despite a, a specific request. When I asked you if you had any information that this stuff is toxic, you withheld it from me.
I didn't have it.
You didn't have this information.
I didn't have it laying in front of me when you called me, it's.
Okay, okay. Well, I'm going to.
Uh, just to clarify, sir, no, no, wait, don't clarify. You made a statement that you had requested, if I had toxic information. You did not do that, sir. You only requested a copy of the report, and when I said declined, I said you would get the report when I presented it. That is when you told me I could not be on the board. So let's get all of our facts straight before you start saying things you said to me, which you didn't.
At each of the previous meetings in which you presented, I've asked you if you had any information that this material is toxic or that there's contamination in Muscatine County.
And you said you didn't agree with.
I gave you.
You did not agree with me. I'm going to treat you the same way that you treated me the last time. I'm not going to let you go down a pathway in which you say you said something which you didn't. And I will also point out to you, sir, that you said, once you had proof that it was toxic, you'd quit using it on the roads for the children's sake. Now.
Yes.
All right. I think that is something, since you made that statement previously, are you going to stand behind it now? You don't need to ask me about the toxicity, you have it now, all right?
We finally do. Thank you.
Geez, I, I don't work for you, sir.
No.
And I waited for the first board meeting. This is the first, first board meeting since I got the information, correct?
Well, no.
Correct?
No.
Well, Monday, or excuse me, Wednesday you were sworn in, right?
The two new.
Tuesday or Wednesday? Wednesday you were sworn in?
Yes.
How long was your meeting?
About forty-five minutes.
Right. And you elected a new chair, correct?
Correct.
All right. So this is the first full-length board meeting, correct? Since I got the information, since I got the information, this is the first full-length board meeting. Yes or no, sir?
No.
It can be checked. This is the full, I'll ask Mr. Holiday, is this the full, first full-length meeting you've been to? Where the public's been invited and, uh, you've had a nice big open area here? Where did you, where was your last meeting? Was it in a courthouse?
This room.
This room? Okay. So, this is the first.
We have evidence that you have presented.
Now, sir, I will say, since I do not work for you and you have not in the basically spirit of openness asked me to continue to keep you informed, which you haven't. You haven't said, well, by the way, sir, as you get new information, please bring it forward to us. We will give it the fullest attention of the board. You haven't said that. And in fact, you weren't even in charge the last time. Mr. Sauer was, he was the chairman. And he ended up, the meeting, pointing out to the same report, the two thousand and eight report, that said that this was safe to put on the road. And so I went to the source of that. And I did that. I generated this report this last Friday. I finally collated all the information, talking to different people, including at the University of Iowa, at Cheek, the Center for Health and the Environment. I talked to Iowa DNR. I talked to past chairmans of the Iowa Environmental Protection Commission. I got all that information first before I wrote that final report. So the report was done last Friday, all right? And it got posted on my website Sunday night. It was available for the public at that time. We're going to tell you today. So I didn't hold anything back, but your board members, and I speak to the three of you that were here the last time, you did not ever say to me, by the way, Dr. Askew, if you come up with any new technical information that would point to the toxicity of this material, please get it to, to us immediately. We want to discuss it with you. You did not say that. So, since I do not work for you, I am a private citizen, and you did not ask for the information. You cannot claim now, Mr. Mather, that you didn't get it in time. If you said, oh, we want a copy of the report, I gave you the topic of what I was going to be talking about. The report was not finished yet. But you then said in emails to me that I could not present to you until I give you the report seven days in advance.
Five.
Seven.
Seven, it's in the email. Seven days in advance, all right? I'm just using your own words, sir. You can't deny your own words.
Typically, five days of.
Well, now, you say typically, but your email says seven.
I'm looking at the email and.
But, but no, I'm saying, no, 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 I'm just saying, I don't want to discuss it anymore, but I don't want.
I think you do. Here's, here's the thing.
Do. Now, you said, once it was unsafe, you're going to take it off the road. I'm going to hold you to those words, sir. You sit on the school board, right?
I do.
Right. Don't you want to protect the children, of course? All right, then why are you doing this? Why aren't you just looking at the report? If you want to follow up.
I just got it.
Well, why aren't you looking at it? You can say, well, we'd like to discuss it.
Someone keeps talking.
No.
So here's the thing.
No, 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 don't, don't belittle, don't belittle, you sort it out.
You have provided a report. Okay, sir, sir, I've given you plenty of opportunity to speak. Now you're done.
No, 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 no.
Sir, I don't want to have to have you removed, but you need to allow the political process to continue. The political process is.
Process is to protect the people you elected you.
Yes, and I asked you.
Are you protecting them?
Ten, for a report you had ten days ago about toxicology, you didn't give it.
And it wasn't consistent with the way you've been doing business.
I don't know what that means, Daryl.
That means that the previous two meetings, you didn't ask specifically for the report. You didn't, you didn't ask me specifically when I called in for the report. And you didn't ask Doug specifically. He wasn't even asked. Pardon?
You told me there was no report on.
Last night, last night at seven thirty, and the night before a meeting is inappropriate. I don't care what anybody says.
If, let me, let me turn the situation around. Let's say I had information ten days ago that this substance was toxic, okay? And I said, I'm going to wait for a meeting to talk about this. I'm not going to tell anybody in the public. Even if they ask me, hey, do you know if this is toxic? And I held that up for ten days. What would you be sitting here, you'd be here crying. What would you be sitting here, you'd be here crying bloody murder, and you'd be right. Because anyone who has been in a discussion with the board about toxicology, you've been here trying to convince us that this matter is toxic, now you actually have some evidence for the first time in two months that this is toxic. Okay, from, again, as Dr. Askew said, someone other than himself. You held on to it, despite specific requests for it, and that's frustrating, it's frustrating.
You didn't specifically request it, sir.
No, you did not request...
You asked me for a copy of the report, period. You did not say, oh, is it toxic, please let me know right away if it's toxic. You didn't ask for that, you said, I want a copy of the report.
It was more of an attempt to censor the information coming to you.
What if we censored? Pardon? What is not been allowed to be presented, sir?
Well, it had to come around, it shouldn't, it shouldn't have been, it should have been able to be presented by the citizen. And it shouldn't have had to deny him and come around another way. That shouldn't have happened, under open meanings law, the spirit of open meanings law, that is not correct.
I, I think we're pretty sure he said, she said.
Right now, it was apparent to me that you guys are not so much concerned about toxicity as you are about some kind of stunt, and that's frustrating.
No, I'm concerned about the policy.
If you're concerned about toxicity, you'd afforded that information right away.
Oh, my goodness, I, I tell you, this is interesting. I think we're pretty sure that he said, she said, I think, sir, that you are intangible. So, I, I would say, all right, other board members, if you're interested, be happy to talk to you about it after the board meeting, give you more information on how we're proceeding. But I feel, Mr. Mather, you are biased, and because you're biased, sir...
I'm biased, sir.
Ah, geez, you know, that's just like when I caught kids cheating on a test, and I said, how did I cheat? When you catch somebody being biased, it's very obvious, just go back and look at your own words. Look at the recording we have of you, and take a look at it in a quiet area and have some neutral people listen to it.
I asked you several times, there's any evidence, you've not, yeah, but it's until today.
You did not ask, you did not ask, sir, so don't ask about it.
So what I'm going to do...
No, you did not ask for any evidence, you just asked for a copy of the report, that was it.
Mr. Chairman?
Gentlemen, this, this topic is closed, okay? The topic is closed, and what I'm going to say is, I'm going to put on next week's agenda a motion to discontinue the use of SLIG, will that satisfy you?
No, not totally, not totally.
You got five years' worth of SLIG cleanup, sir.
And I think there's...
Tell me exactly how we're going to do that.
That's your problem.
Oh, boy, now, now you want an explanation? I'm not going to go in depth on that, but I'll be sit, happy to sit down with the members of the SLIG committee and a joint group out of this board.
Three of you guys?
Well, there's more of us, okay? All right, sit down with you and a select group of the board, and we can talk about. And I think we should keep the engineer involved in it also, because he's the one who's going to be at the lead end in cleaning this up. Now, I would suggest also that the engineer or someone on this board request from SSAB, if you could get the last five years' worth of metals analysis, I've requested it, and I haven't heard anything back. But since you bought their material, because then, don't send that analysis to me. Send it to the state toxicologist and say, by the way, here's extra data, because he wants extra data. Here's extra data, exactly how bad our things. Now, if that one data point's an outlier, I'll be happy to shake your hands, Mr. Mather, and say you are absolutely correct. But if it turns out that the data point I have is representative of what you put on the county roads for the last five years, go and read about Tines Beach in Missouri. They put on toxic material on their roads to seal the roads. They got it from Monsanto and Emerson Electric, and it was like seal coat, oil and gravel. Well, it turns out it was full of PCBs and dioxins. Got a big flood that came through, flood in ninety-three, washed it off the roads and onto people's property, and they had to clean up an abandoned part of the town of Tines Beach. So when I talked to Mr. Henry Marquardt about this, and we looked at the results, and the fact that you put this on roads for the last five years, Henry said...
That was motor oil they put on, right?
No, it was bottom oil, it was bottom oil from, what happens is Monsanto and Emerson Electric had government contracts. In the process, they created different things that had PCB data and such. They had this oil left over at the bottom, it was Atari oil, they couldn't sell it, they couldn't give it away, they couldn't use it. So they gave it to government agencies, and they put it on the roads. It was okay, well, it sat on the roads, but once it got washed off into people's property, that's when it got contaminated. And now you've got dust on the roads. And by the engineer's own letter, it's up to sixteen percent two-hundred grit. Two-hundred grit was identified by Mr. Schmitz in his two thousand and eight report as a dust factor. So dust leaves the road, goes onto property. We've also talked to the Iowa State Veterinary Toxicologist. He wants more data, but he assumes by looking at the original data, this stuff could be toxic to all forms of livestock, if it gets onto the pasture. Because apparently livestock eats dirt, along with the grass when they graze. So there is a concern that it's impacting the ability of livestock. Now, you mentioned horses there, Mr. Sauer. I couldn't get from him an equine, but what I did get was from the Merck Veterinary Manual, these are things I was looking at. While I was getting the other data in, with the Merck Veterinary Manual, metals at this concentration, especially copper and magnesium, are toxic to cows, calves, sheep, both short-term acute and long-term chronic toxicity. Now, State, Iowa State, uh, toxicologists could not tell me exactly how bad things were until there were samples taken of the dirt in the pastures adjacent to the roadways, that's what he wanted. So that's not in my final report, because I couldn't get anything definitive. But I can tell you that if it turns out that that material is as bad as it was in twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, as my twenty-eighteen report, you could be looking at impacts to agriculture through the whole county.
Oh, right, this time we don't have any evidence of that.
Well, we have to have more data.
But do we have any, uh, trends showing that there's an abnormal rate of casualty?
Here's the thing, when you have an animal die, you don't send it in for an necropsy. You know, you don't send it in and have the heart, the lungs, the bone tissue looked at, because it's dead. You call up the renter, and off it goes to the rendering plant, and you hope you don't have another one. Some of the things that these metals form, by looking up the toxicity information from the, uh, US Department of Public Health, includes miscarriages. So if you're breeding your cattle, you could have increases of miscarriages due to the metals being ingested as they graze. Again, this is all supposition. You have to get out there and sample the dirt along the side of the road. I also talked to some bankers about this, their education or their concern with this, they've lent money on property out in the county. If it turns out that this stuff is contaminated, the land value will drop. Now, they said, flat out, they're not required to do an environmental la, analysis of residential property in the county, that's not in the code. But if it becomes common knowledge, the land value will drop, the agricultural value will drop if you have pasteurage, or if you're cutting fodder off of it. So these are all things that more information is needed, because you need to see what has happened. Now, again, if it turns out, Mr. Mather, I'll get up and I'll say you were right, and I'll shake your hand. If it turns out that one data point I have is an outlier, it's just an aberration. But you see, that's all I've got, because SSAB is not required by the state to test all the time.
So here's what I...
That came from DNR, I researched that from DNR.
Here's what I suggest, number one, that, we haven't put any SLIG on the roads since June.
But you got five years' worth.
Understand, but I'm, I'm trying to lay out a plan, and hopefully we can have some consultation on this. Uh, number one, we haven't put down any SLIG since June. Number two, I do think that you've brought us information that suggests that there is a toxicological concern here, and I think it's appropriate for the board to consider suspending the use of SLIG. Um, number three, uh, we, as a county, do not have the wherewithal to go and test every single portion of land in the county, there, there's just no way that's going to happen. So what we have to do is find an acceptable way of finding if there is contamination. So what I would suggest, each of you gentlemen, and I, I apologize, I don't, didn't see any ladies, maybe there are ladies on the SLIG committee. Do all of you live, live near or have property near SLIG-affected roads?
Yes, yes.
Would you all commit in a show of, of cooperation to providing soil samples to whatever the appropriate authority is so that we can determine if your soil contains any such contamination?
Well, I, you know, when you take a soil sample, being in the fertilizer business, it has to be taken in a uniform, standard way.
I would agree, yeah, so, you know, I'm no scientist, I can't tell you how, how to scientifically take those tests, but it seems to me...
That, well, we would have to agree on who, who, who and how they do that.
Sure, but, but the idea sounds...
Yeah, 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 it's possible.
And then if we find that you guys have been contaminated, then I think that suggests maybe we should, you know, cast our net farther afield. If, if not, then, you know, we, we, we can take appropriate action with scientific advice, advice there. I'm just spitballing here, you know, I, I think Dr. Askew, and, and more importantly, this, Dr. Schmitz, has identified a possibility. And, you know, I would, I would just say one thing about what Dr. Askew said. I don't think I'm, I'm right or wrong about anything, I think, uh, obviously, uh, Mr. Holliday and Mr. Socero are new, but I think we've only asked for evidence at this point, and I think all of us agree. And I don't want to speak for anybody else, but it's my surmise that many of us think that there's any kind of public health risk that is credible, that of course we're not going to put this stuff down. Now, I don't know, you know, in terms of remediation, what that, what that necessarily entails, but I think it's fine if we go back and ask SSAB, and I'd ask other board members to comment on that for their metals. You know, I don't see anything wrong with gathering information, um, but I do thank you guys for, for presenting, uh, what I hope won't be taken wrong when I say for the first time, evidence of actual possible contamination. So...
We still have a, I, I, excuse me, go ahead and finish.
So I, I would say, I think, unless you get some of the evidence, that, that all we can do right now is figure out what the situation is. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I, I feel the board has been trying to do, you know? Uh, we've, we've been hearing a lot of arguments, this, that, and the other thing. And, uh, you know, I identified in an email this morning to, uh, uh, Ms. Medina from the, the reporting, uh, from, I believe, Channel Four, uh, that, uh, there are five concerns that have been raised to us, and we've been taking steps to address each of those concerns. Um, this is one of those, and certainly, I think, the most important. So I think it behooves us now to figure out what action we need to take, and, you know, to decide how to, how to move forward. And I would rather we do that in cooperation with the SLIG committee and other interested landowners than what it feels like, than an antagonistic environment. And if I, if you feel like I've been overly antagonistic, I apologize. You say I talk like a lawyer, can't help it, I'm a lawyer, you know? A farmer talks like a farmer, a mechanic talks like a mechanic, I'm a lawyer. I want to see evidence, I want, I want to know, uh, something's going on. So, um, we have some evidence, and I think we can, we can begin to formulate an action plan on this point.
Okay, uh, but there's still a motion on the floor that I made, and it has to be handled some way or somehow.
I'm going to hold that one out of order.
Okay, that's what I wanted on the record then, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
I just wanted to point out to the team members, the SLIG that was found on my county road, sharp pieces that have caused, uh, pieces such as this have caused a lot of flat tires, um, broken windshields, terrible wear on tires that last about a year now, if you bury them on these roads very much.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, would you state for, for just the record, your name and address?
I'm G. Forrest, I live twelve forty-five Green Avenue, West Liberty. Um, the SLIG was put on our road the summer before last, and right after the SLIG was put on our road, I walked the road, it's a half-mile, one-lane road that goes to Highway Six from our, from our house and another farm. And I just collected all of these pieces, because I didn't want them in my tires.
Thank you very much.
So, you know, as you say, there's been no evidence, I believe this is evidence. And it was suggested last meeting that maybe it bounced off a scrap metal truck, no such truck has ever gone down my road. I don't think it's an anomaly, I think this stuff is everywhere.
If, if it helps put your mind at ease, in addition to the, the previous conversation, we, we've asked the county engineer to inspect the load of SLIG that we would have gotten in the future, and to, to go through them and send us, um, you know, samples as well, so that we could see. Because honestly, we don't know where it's coming from, but we want to make sure we find out.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we're all the way up to number five on our agenda. Items with County Engineer Keith White. Uh, item A is to discussion of possible action, action to approve various utility permits. Good morning, Keith.
Good morning. We have, uh, one permit this morning from Eastern Iowa Aitken Power of Wilton, Iowa. And it's to install, uh, uh, some underground cable to retire some overhead along Lucas Road. And it's really just between two house numbers, they're a very short stretch on, on Lucas Road.
I'll move to approve.
Jeff has moved to approve that, was that Santos on the second, or Scott on the second? Santos on the second, all those in favor? Uh, opposed? Okay, anything else, Keith?
Uh, I was just going to report, as I had before, on G twenty-eight, the reconstruction, down there by Lutheran Homes, the old Monsanto, excuse me, Band-Aid property. Since it was a commercial asking, we had to have appraisals done. Most of the appraisers, we used to have somebody locally that's does this, they, they have it. So you're looking at Des Moines, Twin Cities. So we had, uh, a Des Moines or maybe Ankeny appraiser, and then those have to be reviewed by an equally qualified person. Uh, we asked some of the other firms for quotes, which were in the multiple thousands. Uh, I did reach out to our, our former assessor, Dale McCray, who is qualified, and he did agree to do it, and had a considerable, I didn't give him any numbers, but had a considerable savings to the county. Made it clear to him, we didn't expect him to come do us any favors, but I just really wanted to call out as far as I'm concerned, he is doing us a favor, so, we appreciate it.
So is it moving forward, Keith, or...
It, it is, he, he had, we'd given him a timeline, middle of January, so we should have his report back by middle of January.
And is, is that set, what letting is that set for? Are we going to push the letting again, possibly?
Perhaps, it, it's really going to depend on, you know, when we can get the right-of-way acquired, or at least when we're willing to certify that we think we're going to get it acquired. Unfortunately, some of those things like that, same way dealing with the bridge, Bridgerton One Twenty, which is a historic bridge. You know, we're probably two, three years to get through that process.
Well, I, I know G twenty-eight needs some work, but I think it's worth, if we can address that curve, it's, it's worth it, spend a little time to try to get that right-of-way acquired, so we can straighten that out a little bit. Make that a safer road, okay? Thanks.
So all I have, are any other questions?
Thank you, sir, anybody else?
No, thanks, Keith.
Thanks, Keith. Okay, next up, discussion and possible action to authorize the chair to execute a stormwater easement agreement with NPSW Enterprises LLC. Good morning, Kurt.
Good morning. We've been approached, we want to wait a second.
Kurt, can I ask, before you begin, where is this located?
Okay, they're looking at part of Discovery Park. It would be on the east side of Discovery Park is where the housing would be going in. And what they're asking is a stormwater easement would be on the east side of Discovery Park. Actually, some of it in the area of what's under lease with the Muscatine Arboretum Association.
Thank you.
So we were, we were approached by NPSW Enterprise for new, uh, housing development going in east of Discovery Park. They would need some stormwater easement agreement that would save them from building it on their property. We would still get the water coming over to us anyway. We currently have a wetland, um, that is, was built with the idea, when we built that, that piece of property was still part of the county farm, and actually was in a cornfield, and so that water came down through, and we built a wetland there. Um, and to be honest with you, we could actually use a little bit more water in that wetland. It does not hold the water that we like to see in that wetland. But, uh, so they are looking at using, running a pipe off of their subdivision, through a portion of the county park underneath our... trail, they would, you know, it's in the agreement, they would replace that, you know, repair the trail, and then that section of it would run into our current wetland, and according to all the calculations that were provided to us, our wetland can easily handle that amount of water coming in. There was also then, the other side of the housing division would look at running it, they originally wanted to run it into a portion of Discovery Park, which is under easement with the Arboretum Association. The Arboretum Association met with them on-site, they were not really interested in seeing, uh, a small, um, water structure built down in that area, and so, um, the developers came back with another idea, and they're looking at purchasing some property to the south of Discovery Park to build this water retention pond, but they would have to run a pipe through the corner of Discovery Park, which again is under lease with the Arboretum, but it's still county property, and that's why we're before you guys. Both of these requests have went before the County Conservation Board, they're comfortable with it, they made a motion to recommend to you guys to approve this easement. I've also went with the Arboretum Association to make sure that they were okay with this change and just that pipe going through, they had no problem with that other than we put in there, uh, 'cause we don't have the exact location where this pipe will go. If there is any trees impacted, that those would be replaced, uh, and put back in the condition that, you know, was before, replaced by the developers, uh, and then it would be put back in, you know, condition that it was prior. But, you know, I don't see where it's gonna have any adverse effect on Discovery Park actually, you know. Putting housing close to a park, it's gonna be a place people are gonna use the park. Kurt?
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, go ahead. Yeah, I was just gonna state, the water's already going there.
That's correct, we're already are getting the water.
And we're probably gonna have, with the, uh, with the amount of paving that is done there, we're probably gonna have just a slight amount, I don't know what the calculation would be, but slightly more water-
It will be an increase, that's correct.
Yeah, it's an increase, but you've got the water already.
Yeah, yeah, and we've got a structure that can handle an increased water, and the other structure is not gonna be on our property now, it's just a matter of the pipe going through our property. And we like it that the idea that the city has your requirements for new development, because if you look at that creek that runs through there, there's been a lot of water run down through that creek, and that affects all Discovery Park because that water comes on down and winds all through Discovery Park, so it'll slow some of that water down.
Kurt, at the risk of being accused of thinking like a lawyer, um, the, I see that the easement agreement doesn't have a termination clause for if this ever falls into disuse, is that something you normally think about putting in?
I don't know, I guess I kinda refer that to Alan, Matt.
Sure. I mean, I guess I don't have a huge problem with it, it just, that might be something we wanna include, and at least talk to Alan about whether we wanna include that and things like this going forward.
Okay.
Kurt, do you want to say something?
Pardon me?
What size pipe?
You know, I don't know if that was on there. That, uh, going under, going underneath our, I know they were talking an eighteen-inch pipe at one time, going underneath, but I don't know exactly.
Then probably don't know where.
I would hope they would, well, I don't know. You know, again, I guess maybe I didn't point that, I apologize for that. All of this structure would be owned by the city then, it is all city property then, so if there's any maintenance that has to be done on that in the future, that would be done by the city, because they're the ones that require this. So there is nothing onto the county, once we allow that structure to go on to us, it isn't that, you know, if that pipe fails, um, we're gonna be responsible for replacing that pipe, the county will not be responsible in that agreement.
Who would be installing it?
Pardon me?
Who would be installing it?
I'm sorry.
Who would be installing the pipe?
Um, I would assume the contractor that is doing the subdivision would install it. No, the county's not, we're just allowing them an easement across us to do it, and then repair the trail once they do it. Yeah, so I assume it's up to the contractor to do it, whether they would do it or they hire it out, the contractor would be responsible.
I would make a motion to approve.
Scott has moved, is there a second?
I will recuse myself as I'm involved in this, and I would say that, just to note to Santos, that it is all built to city engineering and city specs, and because it becomes part of public infrastructure, it'll be inspected and taken over by the city as a part of its long-term plan.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Santos has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Uh, if asked, please know that Jeff has recused himself.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Next up, discussion, item seven, uh, item A, discussion and possible action to approve the county recorder's office reporter fees collected for December thirty-first of two thousand eighteen quarter in the amount of fifty-four thousand two twenty-seven eighty.
Move to approve.
Second.
Scott has moved, Jeff has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, uh, motion to approve the county treasurer's report for that quarter in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand six twenty-one ninety-five.
Second.
Scott moved, Jeff seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
And finally, the county sheriff's office report, the civil department's fees collected in that quarter were twenty-one thousand two fifty-six oh six.
So moved.
Scott has moved.
Second.
Jeff has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number eight, on appointments, uh, item A is to reappoint Bruce Bryant, and I should say in advance, we thank all of these folks for their willingness to serve. Uh, Bruce Bryant is the Muscatine County Weed Commissioner for a one-year term ending December thirty-first twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Jeff, Scott has moved, Jeff has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. B, appoint Jody Hanson to the Eastern Iowa Tourism Association, uh, as that represented for a one-year term ending December thirty-first twenty nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Scott moved, Jeff seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
C, reappoint Megan Elliott to the Community Action of Eastern Iowa Board of Directors for a two-year term ending on December thirty-first twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Scott has moved, Jeff has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
D, reappoint Dr. Robert Weiss as Muscatine County Medical Examiner for a two-year term ending December thirty-first twenty twenty?
So moved.
Second.
Scott moved, Jeff seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Designate Collette Hostetler, Dr. Mark Odell, Dr. Stephen Paulsrud, and Dr. David Weddick as deputy medical examiners, and Tom Summitt, Darren Brooke, Susan Garrett, Todd Heck, Rich Hines, and Tasha Wheeler as medical examiner investigators for two-year terms ending on December thirty-first twenty twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Scott moved, Jeff seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. F, reappoint Niva Reddick Baker and William Kellner to the Muscatine County Board of Health for three-year terms ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Scott moved, Jeff seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
G, reappoint Marcia Garro, or Garrot, I'm not sure, I apologize, to the Colesville Benefited Fire District for a three-year term ending December thirty-first twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one, this has already been approved by Loisa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
H, reappoint Lynn Pruitt, Mary Pepperidge, and Rebecca Algood to the Muscatine County Historic Preservation Commission for three-year terms ending January one twenty twenty-two. Those in favor, or, excuse me, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Scott's moved, Jeff seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It is approved. I, reappoint Andrea Ryan, a registered architect and engineer, and Nate Orvis, a private citizen, to the Muscatine County Building Board of Appeals for three-year terms ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Scott moved, and Jeff has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Finally, but not, last but not least, reappoint Jim Getkin to the Muscatine County Conservation Board for a five-year term ending December thirty-first twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Scott, seconded by Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
We're gonna appoint him to a one-year term with the expectation that he's going to submit-
A five-year term of the one.
Yeah, a five-year, we're required to do a five-year term, but we expect he's going to submit his resignation after one year.
And I would also note back on the, for the new members, if you see on the Colesville, we have a couple of positions on boards, one with Scott, one with Loisa, where we have a shared appointment, so they appoint, we appoint, we have to get, we have to agree on appointments, and that's the one that we're-
And this Colesville one, there's three people, um, two of them are Muscatine County residents, one is Loisa County, so when it's a Muscatine County resident, we take the lead and appoint first, and then wait for Scott, Scott or Loisa to do the same, and vice versa, and this particular appointment is a Loisa County resident, so that's why they took action first, and then we took action second.
All right, thank you. Next up, item nine, discussion and possible action to approve and authorize the chair to sign a statement of election costs for the city of Stockton local option sales and services tax election, held in conjunction with the twenty-eighteen general election, with county auditor Leslie Soule. Anything to add, Leslie?
Just that normally, obviously, being a general election, we wouldn't be having any billing go out, but since they had this special election on that, we felt it was appropriate to charge them for the, um, extra publications that we had to do on their behalf, and for the, um, extra programming that we had to pay for in order to put that on the ballot. We didn't charge them for any workers or anything like that, because we would have to have that anyway for the general election, but we did charge them for those items.
And I would note that that totals out at eight hundred and six dollars and fifty-seven cents, the vast majority of which was just a newspaper write-off.
Correct. Most of it, yes, yeah.
I'll move to approve.
Jeff has moved, Santos has seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next up, item ten, discussion and action to approve the minutes of the January second of twenty nineteen regular meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Moved by Jeff, seconded by Scott, all those in favor?
Aye.
Eleven, correspondence, Santos, start on your end.
I just had to call the house, like-
Okay.
-come in and enjoy, and wanted to hear my comments, or, I'm sure, I don't have a special honor, but hopefully I'll try to, you know, see what information I can introduce today, but I will see that it definitely is possible to get that.
Jeff?
Uh, I had a brief meeting with the leadership team at Senior Resources. Uh, they wanted to make sure we, they weren't off our radar, and knew they were still around, and, uh, so if anybody here knows that there's been a lot of turmoil around Senior Resources in the last four or five years, but, uh, great organization, do a lot of good in the community. Uh, there's been some issues, there were some real issues with them when the state went to a public bid for senior services, and then, uh, Milestones Area Agency on the aging, they got a seventeen-county area, so we're represented by that, we talked about that with our board positions, and so I think that's something we wanna stay on top of, but had a nice meeting with them, and they're doing good things as always over there.
I had, uh, in addition to the aforementioned correspondences with, uh, Mr. Siwazak and Moig and Dr. Askew about slag issues, just trying to get an idea of what they wanted to present. I also had a contact with, um, Andrea Medina from, I believe, Channel Four, uh, who had some questions about slag, and I did my best to answer those. I would forward it all to you guys, but I just finished it up at about eight forty-five this morning, so I'll pass that along to you, so you guys can see what I said, and certainly make that available for the public as well. Uh, Scott?
I have nothing.
Doug, okay. Doug, uh, didn't have any committees yet, did you?
No.
I don't think so. I don't think, I don't think he's, Scott, you have?
I did not have.
I did not, ready.
No meetings yet.
Santos?
No.
All right, we're still early, see what we can do about that. Uh, I guess pretty soon we're gonna be approving those things. Uh, at this point though, uh, any information from county employees? Yes, sir, Keith. Keith White, county engineer.
Yeah, just, uh, a couple things. While, while we're in the meeting, the email came in from Dale with the review appraisals, which he found all the original ones to be fair and acceptable, so, a week earlier than promised, so I wanted to mention that. And then I wanted to clarify on a couple things. Uh, Mr. Askew mentioned, uh, specifications I gave him on the rock and on the slag, and, uh, said, you know, it could be sixteen percent. Well, what I told him in writing, or maybe it was Doug, I don't remember which one requested it, is the spec is six to sixteen on the two-hundred, which is the dust. I told them they were allowed with the slag to not meet that because they can't get it that dusty. Okay, that's why we know we have to get the fines from the road or from the rock, so they don't even make the six percent dust, or the rock can go up to sixteen percent, so just clarification on that dust issue. And then also, just wanted to clarify, excuse me, between Gerdau, which would be Phoenix, and SSAB, which would be Harstow, there's about, there's probably over three hundred thousand tons of slag goes out every year. We use ten thousand this year, so, uh, if we're gonna worry about dealing with it, you've got another two hundred and ninety thousand to account for.
Outside of our county, right? Or to other?
No, well, I'd say a lot goes in our county, a lot of, a lot of goes, a lot of goes out of the county too.
Okay.
Just for the new members, that's the kind of quantities, we are, you know, we aren't their big use.
So we had three, we were three percent of their output last year.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Thank you, Keith.
Thanks.
Any other county employees?
No.
Okay. Fourteen, items with the administration office. A is discussion and possible action to approve the board of supervisors' appointments to various boards and commissions. I think Nancy sent out, uh, a revised list, so, uh, any questions or discussions on that?
I am going to, uh, bring forward that, uh, I spoke with Doug with regard to the Muscatine County Fair Board, and, uh, since I've taken on several of the boards, I asked her if he'd be interested in doing the Fair Board, and he said that he would, so that's the only change that I'm aware of, uh, on here that-
Thanks, Doug.
-Fair Board would be God, and I appreciate that, and, uh, not myself going forward.
Nancy got that?
Yes.
Wonderful. Any other discussion? And I have an entertaining motion to approve.
So moved.
Uh, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, congratulations, everyone, thank you very much. Uh, item fourteen B, discussion and possible action to approve Resolute Resolution oh one dash oh seven dash oh nine dash oh one, appointing the Muscatine County Representatives to the Muscatine County Joint Communications Commission, and this is a roll-call vote. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And moved by Santos, seconded by Jeff, uh, Santos.
Aye.
Jeff?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
And I vote aye, motion passes. Any other items that need to come before the board today?
Um, I just wanted to let you know that Tom Harper's completing his second full term on the Board of Adjustment in March, so I will be putting down the advertisement to see if anybody else is interested in serving in that spot.
So Board of Adjustment, Nancy, for folks that might be listening in, that may be interested in that, um, they deal with, uh, appeals to assessments, is that right? Or no, they're working with you, Eric?
Yes.
Yeah, maybe you give us a break.
The Board of Adjustment is charged in state code with reviewing special use permit applications, variance applications, and any appeal of any zoning, uh, decision that I would reach, because it is what they do.
How often, how frequently is that board?
They typically have something on the agenda every month, once a month, and they typically have something, so.
Thank you, Eric.
Anything else?
Anybody in the public listening that might be interested in serving in a role like that, notify one of your board members, so we could get you, there'll be, you'll publish it, and it'll be in a, uh, application process.
And it'll be on our, they're always posted on our website, the county's website as well.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, then I will declare us adjourned.
Thank you, sir.